You ready, James? All right, we're moving back into regular session. Are there any motions being made coming out of the decade of shift? That's for Kenyon, please.
I would like to move to direct the city administrator to continue negotiations on OIP lot number twenty-two.
Your second.
Second then.
A motion made by Council Kenyon. Second of a council brewer, any discussion of that motion? All right, and the motion was made to direct the city administrator to continue negotiation for the sale of lot twenty-two at the OIP. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchin. Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Hollitt.
Nay.
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to item eleven point one, James.
All right, so the city has purchased in the traveling county visitor guide past few years. The options. From us again, the prices have gone up by about four hundred dollars from last year. Cost is three thousand three hundred and thirty-five. Or same things currently have, which is on one page of ads that businesses can buy four hundred ninety dollars per tile. Slightly increase in that, I think it's one eighty last year. If we wanted to expand and double the amount of pages, thousand one hundred and seventy fifty percent discount on the second page. Personally, I don't think that's that great of a deal to expand and nice to get our businesses eighteen tiles to purchase. But I think it's too expensive. And it's my opinion. Obviously, use TRT funds for this. Examine what we have last year and then we will listen and put on speaking in areas.
All right, do I hear a motion on this?
I moved to approve three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars in TRT funds for the twenty twenty-four edition of the Traveling County Eugene Cascades and Coast Visitor Guide.
Wait here a second. All right, motion made by Council Kane, second by Council Charman, any questions to James or statements, answers, please?
So my question is, do we have nine or fifteen businesses in Oak Ridge that are anxious and willing to do that?
Yeah, last year they sold out.
Did you have like a waiting list rated? Do you think we'll be able to fill eighteen if hypothetically we decided to do the two page? I'm just curious.
I think we could because it's per tile, so you can, a business can buy two tiles and make a figure.
Okay.
Michelle Lemon is pretty common. She's the one that helped them last year. There were lots of people wanting to me. But she's obviously same opinion.
Does the money that we get back from the businesses for the tile go back into, it doesn't go into the general fund or does it? It does.
Yeah, if we were to pay for all of this, we would have to add one hundred ninety times nine is.
So that price is, so the thirty-three, thirty-five is for the page and then it's an additional hundred ninety dollars per business?
Yeah.
So it's like a hundred, it's oh, okay, I misunderstood the way it was written.
But the business has come forward with the hundred million.
Yeah.
But there, it's not to recoup the money that we're putting out for the ad itself. Okay.
That's what Kenyon got a question.
Um, yes, I wanted to ask. Regulize it, does anyone else have one?
Do you know which businesses actually put in for it last year?
Is that the last year's on the, it's on the packet?
Yeah, I was looking at it, but I didn't see the Oak Ridge tiles. I saw the
Three-legged crane, Arbor Inn, Dog Wild, Oak Ridge Arts Council.
Oh, I didn't scroll down far enough. Okay, so just those nine businesses?
So if a business wanted to advertise in this magazine and we already had our nine tiles filled, can they?
They could buy their own page, which
Yeah, I asked that last year and it was really expensive.
Okay.
Is this their annual? It only happens once a year? So it's the same one, you know?
Any other questions?
I have another question. I know that there are, there are two of these types of things on the agenda and I know we haven't gotten to the other one yet, so very much my question. I know we're talking about possibly, we're talking about voting on both of them, but in your opinion, because I haven't read these magazines, in your opinion, is there one that helps the other one as far as reaching people, bang for your buck? Like, would it be more beneficial to do one than the other?
Well, it's, it's really two different audiences. The other one is more for business development. As you've done before. And that one's more open and international. A little more extended, around order of residence.
And choice.
But it might be somewhat harder to compare.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. The motion was to approve three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars in TRT funds for the twenty twenty-four edition of the Traveling Counties Eugene Cascades Visitor Guide. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Brewer. Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchin.
I and Counselor Coker is now online, I believe.
Okay, Counselor Coker.
Since I wasn't able to hear everything, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to eleven point two, James.
All right, so this is another advertising opportunity for the city. This one we've not done before, Business or Economic Development Guide Magazine, which Business Oregon takes with it anytime they go to economic development conventions. It's also directly mailed to over ten thousand people. Executives looking to move their business or part of their business Oregon. Rates and puts online. And this publication actually lasts for two years, not one year. Currently, we have the ability to purchase the inside front cover. Seven thousand five hundred dollars. Which is a lot of money, but a page anywhere else in the magazine, which ends up being random, is five thousand seven hundred. So theoretically, it's a good deal for us to be able to get the inside front cover because that will actually be read more often. And the reason we're able to get that is the who have last year's for Portland, they're, they're not doing it this year. Oh, that's the other part. Once you get that page, you have first right of use of the next time it comes around, so. It's like a cover forever if you want to renew every year. The reason I support this, number one, the position that I think we're really going to get somewhere with economic development. Begin the end of publications. They also send a message, this is where we want to be part of that station. We have, we'll be paid for this from obviously TRT and RTMP because there's some tourism that we gained in front of this ad, but primarily economic development for the OIP. We have three thousand dollars already budgeted in the OIP fund for advertisements, which means we could spend up to three thousand nine hundred dollars from the OIP funds without going over the ten percent. It's already in March. But I would do something like that budget to the rest of the pay for to R T M P funds. Check out the magazine and see what other cities are doing. Good one. So the idea, you know, we're just going to add for the industrial apartments being had for Oak Ridge, but mentioning we have X number of acres industrial land. We are located between Bend, Oregon, Eugene, Oregon, highway. To our code that they can scan directly to our website, which will eventually one day be fabulous. Yeah, so I think it's worth the money.
Okay, so I hear a motion on this.
I moved to approve three thousand nine hundred dollars in OIP funds and the remainder in TRT funds for an ad in the twenty-four, twenty-five Economic Development Guide and Site Selection Magazine.
Second.
Which level had?
Oh, sorry, did I say seven thousand five hundred total?
Remender.
Right. For option one.
Okay. Okay. And so the motion was made by Counsel Kenyon and was seconded by Counsel Hollitt. If people have questions of James on this issue? I, I do have one. Are they going to set up the copy for you? We don't have a graphic artist on staff.
Yes, they said that that would be included. They can help us with that. I was also going to approach the, oh, that. If they're helping, well, yes, they have, that's included in price.
Any other questions? Counsel Kenyon.
I wanted to inquire about more specifically the how, how it is you feel this justifies the TRT funds to be used or RTMP to create overnight space?
Yeah, because if you look at some of the other ads from other cities, it of penalty, I think there's some slogan or something like making world tech. We're, we're ahead of the game in technology or something like that and pointing out that they have I see the internet and then they have solar power. And that they're located great place again with QR code, so business people may think, maybe I would like to have my event here in Oak Ridge or convention. Maybe I'd just like to visit. Because I like to fish. Whatever, or, or they're looking at Bend and the owners are and says, what happened between Bend and Jean and Bend is really expensive, you know? Oak Ridge or at least you can trip there and check it out there. It's at least our.
James said, the way the motion's ordered right now, it sounds like thirty-nine hundred plus three thousand, which is already budgeted, would come from OIP, sixty, six thousand.
Three thousand nine hundred. I'm saying you can, you can spend up to three thousand nine hundred in OIP buses. Three thousand is our budgeted for OIP advertisements without going for ten percent of that budget line item.
Isn't it ten percent of the entire fund?
Right, it is.
I don't think we have a problem with a supplemental budget.
The whole thing could come out of OIP, OIP.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to retract my motion or whatever the word for that is.
Resent.
Resent my motion. And my new motion is I move to approve seven thousand five hundred dollars in OIP funds for an ad in twenty-four, twenty-five Economic Development Guide and Site Selection Magazine for option one.
One second and again.
Okay, a motion made again by Counsel Kenyon, second by Counsel Hollitt. Any further discussion on?
Yeah, I have a question. If, if we take all the funds out of OIP, but does that mean that it has to be totally focused on the OIP? Can we still focus on the whole city or now this surrounding area? And yes, it's obvious the OIP would be a big.
I don't see.
I mean, those ads are kind of focused on you selling the city as a, as a destination, so I don't see an issue.
I think we only get trouble when we put an ad out that said, don't bring your business here, just visit us.
Any other questions? All right, the motion wants to approve seven thousand five hundred dollars in OIP funds for an ad in the twenty-four, twenty-five Economic Development Guide and Site Selection Magazine. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
I, I.
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchin.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Moving on to eleven point three, James.
All right, the effort to have the offer height Westport Search Road nineteen designated for the scene fightway has reinvigorated. Supposed to be this before COVID, obviously stopped that. They are simply asking for a letter of support for those efforts. Signed by Mayor Consent to Site of Oregon Seating Fightway Committee.
All right, I hear a motion on this.
I moved to approve the mayor's signed letter of support of the Site of Oregon Seating Fightway Committee requesting that this need to offer height Oregon Seating Fightway.
You're a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussions or questions of James on this?
Am I wrong? I just heard it pronounced a lot of different ways, so.
That's what I thought it was to offer heighty.
We'll be pronounced tonight, won't it? I just, no, we, I mean. All right, no other questions. Jackie, would you call for a vote on this, please?
Counselor Brewer.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchin.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
All right, let's pass this. Next up is eleven point four with the U.S. Forest Service East Oak Ridge Fuels Reduction Strategy Overview, James or Sarah or both?
Yeah, so Sarah Oldness spoke this year to give us PowerPoint.
So while they pulled that, I'll just do a quick introduction. I think everyone does know me, but just in case you're the folks online and they can't see if I stand here, probably just
You could stand here in front of us if you want.
All right, there.
Yeah.
There you go.
Sorry, Pancha. So my name is Sarah Oldness spoke. I am the facilitator of the Southern Land Forest. I've been for a long time. And the collaborative group just public and should stakeholders that work with partners that do forest management in the area. So it tends to be a lot of with the forest service. We also work with the Forestry and the other private landowners and focus on projects around restoration, but also especially in the last five years of wildfire mitigation. So I wanted to, Forest Service is starting to look at a big planting area from Forest Service projects, start with a very long planting process before they actually turn to projects that can then be implemented. And with the fire seasons we've been having, fortunately, they are taking it really seriously and have to think about communities that are in, you know, adjacent forests and how to manage forests. So as you know, with Cedar Creek and Bedrock and Hales and on on, the Millbrook Ranger District, which is the district of the Lata National Forest that surrounds Oak Ridge, has burned over two hundred thousand acres in the last three years, and that's significant. So that's creeping up on a quarter of the district. So Oak Ridge, this, you know, is threatened by wildfire and forest management decisions made both in our community and adjacent to our community are important. So the Forest Service has asked the collaborative group to help them to talk to the community and, and they've been at several of our meetings and the ranger could even night, but to, to share, they are looking at a planning area and I'm calling it a strategy right now is how to approach doing projects adjacent to Oak Ridge. So go ahead and the, this strategy is called the East Oak Ridge Strategy and what the district is looking at is the land forest, national forest lands between Oak Ridge and basically the Cedar Creek Fire Boundary. And so that is a really large area and I'll use some kind of local terminology terms. So if people don't know what that, you know, what I'm referring to, I can I think I can explain a little bit more. I'll sort of go to the next slide. So this, this larger area, so the purpose of the planning area and strategy right now is to look at landscape level treatments, looking across the landscape and to do forest management, advocate forest resiliency and fire operations near Oak Ridge, Westford. So I won't get into the technicalities of what potential operational delineation are, but it's a of wildfire suppression will tactic when they have big fires, on how to manage those fires. And, and there's recognition that we, that we both as a community and as Forest Service, you'd be looking at on landscape and these pods and how prepared for fire is that forest, whether, you know, fire doesn't know about, it's right, or jurisdictional. So how prepared is forest lands? And field breaks alone are adequate to increase forest resiliency to fire. So there is a need for additional treatments and work and combining change of field breaks and landscape level treatments is something that could move the forest as it is now, move it to a condition that is more receptive to fire. So when fire happens, it's easier to catch those fires on small, you know, for firefighters, not to be on their back foot when it comes to suppressing those fires, but to be able to be more proactive.
Sarah, can I interrupt for one second? Counsel President, can you see the PowerPoint or you're just seeing the the audience?
I can only see the audience, but I have the PowerPoint pulled up on my own computer and I'm following it.
Well, for the sake of the people watching online, I think if you go to Zoom and share and share the video, there you go. How about now?
Yep, it's there.
Great.
Go to the next slide. And my intent is just to give you a quick fifteen minute overview to encourage people to come to, I'll give you several ways to get information. Let's go back, launch that big mountain of a whole area. And why go for this one? Great, okay. So you can see this is not the, the red hatched lines are private lands. So this is state Oak Ridge, Westford, High Prairie, Dunning Road. We have private lands owned by now Sierra Pacific, Pacifica, forest lands full in this area. On Hill's Creek side and then Millbrook side and then we have some private lands up Hill Street. So the, the planning area we're talking on, come to this site is, so here's the Oak Ridge, so the eastern boundary. And then this is the boundary of Cedar Creek Fire. So looking at this whole landscape of potential treatments that could set the forest up to, to be more receptive to fire or more accessible to fire. Because right now there's a lot of roads out there, a lot of those road services. So that pod concept. They're looking at three large pods. So this first one is that mountain pod, this local terminology I'm using. Aubrey Mountain Pod and the Kitten Ridge Pod. Oh, and then I guess to point out, so this is a twenty-eight thousand acre area of just forest service alone. And then there's potentially fifty million work fee of of logging that would need to be done to treat that area. And this is like initial guess, those numbers are kind of rough. And I'll talk about Forest Service. I do want to say on the climate, we have been implementing field stretching projects on private lands. So we've already on three hundred acres, we're funding for another three hundred acres. That will be very much in line with some of the decisions of Forest Service will be making on their side of the boundary. But I won't talk about that. So they're not, I, I should say what the Forest Service is asking right now of the community is, this is a land, big landscape. If they were to try and plan for all of it, the planning process alone would probably take three to four years. So that means no work was started until three or four years out. And we know with the fire seasons, we don't have time on our side. So they're considering, not, they wouldn't normally do this, but considering breaking it into smaller projects. Probably two or three smaller projects. And so they want to know from the community of that landscape, is there priorities that the community has and what do people think that they want to see done first? And are they open to just breaking the project up into smaller, smaller projects and sequencing them? And there's opposing minds to doing both. And, and all this data is a local knowing of landscape to do, I think it's a hard decision. So the more input that can come from the community, the easier it will be to make that decision if, if there is, you know, of good reasons to consider one or the other. So I'm just going to go across the three, just to give a quick snapshot of each three to give you some something to think about and then some ways to get it. Okay, so then mountain area. So this pod would be to increase fire resilience, landscape resiliency for greater Oak Ridge area, also our High Prairie area. It can be leveraging work that was done with the Oak Ridge, Westford, and Fields Reduction Project. So this is the the thinning logging that we saw along Worthfork, so this is one more right here. And then, then these units around here, we call them the Hooey Thing Units that are right adjacent to Rock Road and that area. So there is more opportunities for additional hitting and roads that can be opened up and treated in this area. Now, one thing, a lot of work has been done, but focusing on it could, you know, get that really close to completely done. Okay, so let's go on with the next one, I guess. On this slide, but the intent is collaborate with the community around this and to, to get basic work. Aubrey Mountain Pod, that's this yellow one right here. Um, Aubrey Mountain Pod, so this yellow one right here, um. So this, this pod, the intent would be leverage Cedar Creek Fire Shield, uh, treated field breaks, you can't quite see because of the. Um. Focus on video, this red line here, that whole road that goes over Christmas View was treated, um, heavily on one side because of Cedar Creek Fire. Not on the other, so not treating the bathroom and increase that, still right. And then, um, then there is some other roads in there, um, there are some. Units that could be treated and then, um, the railroad is a ma- major player in this whole. And the road has also, um, been a stronger priority in the past two. So something to consider is about the fire. All right, so next slide. And then, uh, and the Kitten Ridge area. Um, so Kitten Ridge is really kind of, you think about, um, Salt Creek and, uh, it's on the south side of Salt Creek. Um, actually, basically the north side of, uh, Coast Creek, um, Kitten Ridge, uh. Yeah, the intent would be increase, uh, fire landscape resiliency. They already, they have done treatments for a really long time. So, um, you've been here for a while, maybe the Shake Beach Fire was a really big fire in eighteen eighty eight. It did burn a lot in this area, so there's been some heavy heat planting. Um, and, and so we have some really dense forests out there. Uh, there was a two thousand acre fire, Kitten Ridge Fire. Which the local fire crew was able to catch, um, and they were one, really lucky and two, really aggressive when they caught that fire. And it was going to sit down, might even have been getting up. So timing was on their side for the season. So a lot of potential in that, um. That pot as well. And you can see there's a lot of older units and there's a road system that goes along these old units that right now is not trying to, but it's something. So then let's go ahead with the next slide.
Um, Sarah, can I ask a quick question real quick? Uh, you mentioned something about the railroad has been the starter of. Years for the, out of the last two?
No, no, in, in years past.
Oh.
So Monty Frog Fire, um, you know, I don't know if one of them ended up, but it was very much a suspicion, where we, fire started with, uh. Um, railroad, so yeah, railroads.
Okay, sparks.
Yeah. We know they get on it, but still, you know. Um. I won't go into this, but we will have an open house. If you want to come and get more information, come get our names. The forest uses, the forest service uses really in-depth wildfire science in analyzing this stuff. So they run all these models and look at flame length, greatest spread, crown fire. This is the actual landscape that we're talking about. So each one of these red is places that. Well, even the yellow is places where they cannot direct attack fire, um, if it were to start under just normal season conditions. And, um, so it shows that there's a lot of, um, higher potential out there on landscape right now. Um, it's the model, if they would do the treatment and if it were lower than that potential. So there's a lot of, uh, backend science that goes into this. You know, and I think the next slide. A lot of models that are here, just want to give you a quick snapshot of those. And then there's other, anytime there's a planning area, this is the opportunity, um, the forest service goes up. Through what they call NEBA, that's the, uh, National Environmental Planning Act, you know, process they do to help them come in with. What they are thinking about doing, various options and get feedback. So anything they're going to do on national forests has to go through feedback. So if they're having any process, it's a great opportunity to throw in other types of work. Um, they might want to do. So, um, like I mentioned, there already be, uh, we treated some private lands that, um. My organization, Department of Forestry, any of the city has funds from, um, from, uh, uh, offices in state fire marshal to do work. So it'll be that. Recreation management in the forest service areas also possibility. And then other field management activities like the strike fire alone or, um, any non commercial things, that's thing in digging the trees. There's other things like that they can look at. So. Um, it's not just the shade of field breaks and the, um, the thinning slash logging is other opportunities. And it's again, one of those things they want to hear from the community, is community like to see. So I think maybe I might go more slide with having the input. Um, so we, we have some flyers on the time, posting stuff online. Um, we have. We have regular committees that meet monthly. So we have a landscape planning committee that really is going to be the one engaging with this project over the next, probably four years of planning. Um, and that, the next, uh, meeting, Monday, December eighteenth, that meeting will be a one hour meeting at the office. And then if weather allows, we'll go up, there's a good, uh, viewpoint of seeing all of these mountains from, um, the Almenos neighborhood. So we'll go and, and take that overlook. Um, and then the next fire safety council meeting is January second, eleven AM. And then, probably if you'll pull out right now, um, I'll probably know then next week. We've had a public meeting, they're all public, but one is, you know, just general folks who can't make day meetings. To come in the evening and meet with the forest service and have maps out and get input. And really the kind of input that, that is important is just local knowledge, local opinions. What do you care about? Where do you feel the highest risk is? Um, and, uh, and are you open to this, you know, smaller projects of each one of these mountains in sequence? And would you like to wait to see it all done at once? Um, that's the kind of, so, um, the other thing for folks, sort of just all our office, we can't make meetings, it's totally okay to call our office and. Um, and someone there can take your input and we'll, um, collect it that way too. Uh, okay, any questions?
Yes, sir.
And this, you know, I just want to give you this very early introduction to this project. There'll be more talk about this as just conversation just came up in the last couple of weeks. Um, but, uh, but yeah, just want to get it out there, uh, because they, the forest service is going to be decided in the next couple of months. For this first year, what they call surveys, where they send, you know, specialists out to look at the forest. Are they going to, you know, delude them and send them all over? Are they going to focus on one area? So that's what I'm saying.
Sarah, have, uh, UP and Seneca indicated that they're supportive of the effort?
Yeah, absolutely. And they're already, you know, uh, uh. As, as the I Center, they actually are part of the collaborative group. And then the railroad, um, they've worked with the fire shop, uh, pretty regularly. So. And, and I haven't heard any preference either way, but just definitely interested in seeing.
That's what Ken.
Um, my question would be, is your consideration for doing another one of those kind of surveys that you had? Uh, coordinated to have done with the WAP?
Um, I guess I could, you know, I think one of the things that I, I, I worry about, um, without a conversation, will not be able to necessarily interpret. Um, you know, it, it, there is just so many details with it. So I think, I think that's why I would probably not lean towards a survey is that. Even if you put a bunch of information people will read upfront, that they might not get all the way through it and then not be giving an informed opinion.
Yeah.
So that's where I think the face to face definitely helps, even the phone calls.
Um, I, uh, I had said a nice thing about a time in the woods and one of the things we've noticed, um, over the last few years are more and more. Traps and roads being closed and things like that, which I also know hindered fires and not yet. Um, with all these projects, is the forest service, um, going to start reopening those roads and maintaining them and leaving them open? So this is how, you know, road maintenance works for the forest service right now, because they basically don't get an annual budget is where they do their timber management. Is where the roads get open and maintained. So at a certain point, if there's no money to maintain those, that's why they enforce them. Yeah. Um, so I think that's the answer there is if there's a reason to go there to open that road for shaded field breaks or for to get into units that goes to go open. But I think that's also with that local knowledge, if you know the road system that. For whatever reason is important to you, I think sharing that's really helpful. I'll have my husband get all the, he's, he's lived here his whole life. Yeah, he knows them all. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sarah. I'm looking forward to the public meeting. Yeah. All right, uh. The item twelve, business from the city administrator, twelve point one, request for reconsideration of council directive regarding. Committee resolutions.
All right, so on our first meeting in November. Council looked at recommendations, now they have made to, uh, change meeting resolutions. And we have rejected three of them, which I think had some unintended consequences that, uh, I hadn't thought about until. Started doing the math. Uh. The main one is that. So council agreed that we could reduce the number of citizens in each committee from six to five. At best. But council rejected, uh, the idea of having a council representative not vote. Which means that council representative is a voting member of the committee. Which means you've got five citizens, plus your council representative, who can only vote in the, in the instance of the tie. And yet there are voting members, so they're going to count for, that means you need four. Four people for form. Would need. Four.
Four positive votes.
Right, four positive votes out of the five. Citizens. And councillor or representatives can only vote. In the event of a tie. So it could be a situation where you've got many of five citizens. Um. You get a three mil vote in favor of something, which would be the majority of citizens. Maybe to be more asking to be both staying, you know, connection, I don't know. So normally that would pack, the problem is. You need four, because the council representative is a voting member and, but they can't throw in their vote. They can only vote if it's tied. Even though it's three up and three to nil win, not a win. That that councillor can't add an additional vote. To get to four. Have something, so. Two ways to fix this, um, one would be to. Follow the committee's recommendation and not allow the council representative to vote. That would be four would go back down to three, I believe, five. But the four on the six. The other way to fix it would be to reject. Recommendation number two. As well, so that we keep committees. At. Six citizens rather than five. So we. Find six citizens, it's our one. And the other, my report. Very popular. So just something I wanted to bring to the council's attention. An issue.
Okay, uh, you don't have a motion here?
May I ask a quick question before we do a motion?
Okay.
Is, uh, um. Two things that you just mentioned. The only two. Issues, because I see three sections highlighted here.
Those are the three, those are the three recommendations that, that council rejected. By your motions, uh, turn that, uh, whatever section, I mean, the number three. Uh. Was rejected by default.
So you're asking us to also reject number two?
That's one way to fit it. There's two way, there's two way to fix this predicament. That's either to reconsider your rejection of recommendation number one. And follow the committee's recommendation, which, which is that. Council representatives do not vote, therefore they do not count as a voting member. Required for form, required for. Uh. Votes to pass. Or. Do also reject. Recommendation of the two. Which would then bump up the number of possible citizens on committee. Back up six. Five. Not only. You at least have. An additional citizen could be there, just easier to make four meetings or passing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to. Table this, um, topic. For another meeting, maybe in January.
All right, the motion. Need my counsel Kenyon. You don't have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Um, well, I'll just point out that, um. It's how I was on vacation. I did not have time enough to review this to the length that I'd like to before I make a decision. But I'd also, uh, like to point out that. I'm on the committee that made the original recommendations. Maybe we can talk about this one more time before. Comes the council to decide again. So that's why I thought maybe tableing that was a good idea.
Okay, any other discussion here? All right, so the motion wants to table it, do a meeting in January, but I think it's probably going to be the second meeting because you're going to, if you want to be admin committee to meet and look at it one more time. That makes sense?
Oh, right.
Second meeting would be fine, but I think admin's meeting this month.
If you submit your motion to table.
We're.
Like to, like to have a date.
We didn't have a calendar here.
Add in there. Third Wednesday.
So December, the third Wednesday.
But I'm trying to think if you cancel that. They have, they may have voted to. That's something that was supposed to be present. No, it's still on.
Okay. So the motion is to, uh, table this agenda item until a meeting in January.
I'll just make it the second meeting in January, just to be safe.
Okay, the second meeting in January.
In my motion.
All right, uh, Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Kutchin.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Tomlin.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
All right, motion passes, uh, under twelve point two, other city business updates, James.
I think there are three items, um. Counselor Hollen, if Kenyon and I were talking, whether the, uh, Benson Party, planning for the. Holiday party, we thought maybe a good idea to see if someone else. Might help us with a lot of. Didn't know there was cooking involved.
Preparing, it's preparing. Whatever you guys.
Um. Second item. Steve would like to apply for a, uh, a grant to do usability studies on alternative energy. Specifically micro hydro. Geo thermal biochar, uh. Fifty thousand dollar grant. In order to do so, to make this more successful, we need a CBO, community based organization, uh. I, we were thinking that the ODAC would qualify for that. And the ODAC yesterday agreed to do that. I just wanted to make sure that was updated with. To council, uh, to that's, do a few weeks, um. That's one. I'm necessarily in a motion.
The WAP, the funding committee also talked about it in the last meeting, Sarah talked about, right?
Yeah, just a different grant though.
I thought the hydro one was the one that you.
Um, no, the, uh, the WAP meeting one. Oh, oh, yeah, right, it did bring up.
Yeah.
Yes, so this, the county, this, this is a separate grant, the county's going to write for us.
Okay.
And it'd be for technical assistance. So the Department of Energy would provide, they'd come in and just do a basically renewable energy. Analysis, warrants on technical ability and then give the city fifty thousand dollars. The city has staff time to give them information. Um, but they, they want the applicant to give a city to working with a community based organization, which they explain is just a group of. Stakeholders that know the community and whatnot. So it seems like, and it can, the CBO can be also part of that. We still want two in groups. So it just seems like it kind of lands well with ODAC because if we can get kind of renewable energy, it needs a backup power source for the OIP, which has been eliminated. For, um, businesses that want.
Well, I'm definitely in favor if it's just a consensus.
Yep, okay.
Uh. Last issue, okay, so. Next Wednesday, December thirteen, ten thirty to thirty, we're having economic development planning meetings. Uh, with, uh, nine members of Lake County team. Um, I'm attending, there's attending, so there's room for two more councillors to attend. Today. In the law and some, uh, councillors would like to, and.
Can you repeat again the dates and what's happening?
Uh, it's Wednesday, December thirteenth, September AM until two thirty PM. It, uh, we originally called all of the, over check economic summit. It backed off when that is, it's more of a planning meeting, we're going to be doing, well, some, some of our other partners later. Basically a chance for a city to present all the things you're working on and ask. Have a discussion with Lake County Economic Development, how their team can help us. Do those goals, to get grants that they can buy with us. Support. To transform things, uh, that's pretty good. It's kind of brainstorming, it's, uh, pretty good. Uh, agenda, I got feedback from General Francisco. Uh, said. And all I said was the agenda, the. Schedule, said we've done more than any other city so far.
Are we the first city?
Yep. Big question though, yes.
I'd like to re-sign that.
Next, I've seen two hands go up.
Right?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I just have some decisions.
I don't want to take a seat, no, finish your bed, I'll take.
Right, so yeah, Wednesday, ten thirty to thirty.
Here, of the city or where?
It's gonna actually start at the OIP office.
It's a tour, right?
Yeah, so we're, the, we're gonna have a meeting there, the OIP, it's right next to a couple sites we want to visit. And then we will circle around, have lunch at, uh, you have to pay for that yourself. And then we continue the tour through the WAC, um, airport, if time allows. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for city business? Alright. Uh, thirteen or fourteen, down to fifteen, fifteen point one, resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-three. Supplemental budget number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
My, I'm gonna turn this over to Colleen primarily, but we've prepared a resolution to. Approve the first supplemental budget, uh, the second one is anticipated. But that one from until the audit is completed, that be to address the. Beginning fund down balances potentially. Other items, this one mainly just house sweeping, um, the council a lot of the grants and we weren't sure if it would or not. And transfers for unsecured expenditures such as the, uh, cost of fixing amphitheater. Spending, of course, uh, sales of. Property, you know, or. And other, I mean, over expenditures. There's three, so there's. There aren't any. Specific questions you can self or colleague can answer. Uh, I, I can, probably notice.
Colleen, anything more?
No, not looking at this question, I, I am going to be working on, um, once we get through this. Cause everything is going to be about updating the budget. I wanted to get that done, or Hannah, I just did not.
So James, this also includes a public hearing for this supplemental budget, so I'd like to move into that now, so we have the input from the public, and then we'll go back and ask questions and for motion for. So, um, we're gonna open the public hearing for resolution eighteen twenty twenty-three, which is supplemental budget number one for fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, first, will ask for any statements in favor? Any statements in favor? Any statements in favor? Alright, any statements in opposition? Statements in opposition? Statements in opposition? Any statements in general?
The supplemental budget, it's concise or it's a little, is it the twenty-two dollar?
No, it's, it's a list of changes to the existing budget, and it's by line item. Any statements in general? Statements in general? Okay, nothing heard, we'll close the public hearing, resolution eighteen twenty twenty-three, and I'll see if there's a motion to be made.
I move that we approve the first reading of the resolution eighteen two zero two three, adopting supplemental budget number one for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I hear a second. I'll second the motion. Questions, discussion? The staff, please.
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest, my spouse is an employee in the city of Oak Ridge, so I won't be participating in the conversation or voting.
Anything else? Anyone else?
I have a question, um, so I know when we went through the first, uh, budget committee, there was, uh. I'm trying to recall exactly what the motion was about reconvening budget committee, is that going to happen? I heard you talking about the second.
That's what happened.
Okay, so that will be going on the second one, this, that one has to do with getting some balances, et cetera.
Yeah, that one, um. Think we'll need more input on from the budget committee. Like I said, this one is primarily housekeeping, it's not the council's authority to wear, uh, authority to prove. The spring, you know, two months, the brands you act.
Okay, councillor Yorkshire?
Yeah, I need to declare a potential conflict of interest, I'm on the volunteer roster with the fire department.
Thank you. Alright, so to be clear, James, the, the next supplemental will be following shortly. This is gonna address, and it's, is, have we received the city budget, uh, city audit or fiscal year twenty-three yet?
No, uh, I got it next week, uh, shot just that.
Oh, well, now I've run it.
It's your own risk, it's your own risk, James. Any other discussion of this supplemental budget? Um. So let's, uh, go ahead and go into a vote, the motion was. To approve the first reading of resolution eighteen twenty twenty-three, adopting supplemental budget number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Burr.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
I abstain.
Councillor Hallit.
I abstain.
Councillor Tomlin.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. James, I don't believe we can ask for any more motions, given there were some ascensions, it's thing, people abstained, it was unanimous.
It was unanimous, we're, so we're good to go, cause it, that happened.
Okay, alright, are there any other motions to be made on this item?
We don't have to read.
We do have to read it, yep, so.
Uh, resolution eighteen dash two zero two three, the resolution adopting supplemental budget number one, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, making appropriations. First, the Oak Ridge resolves, oh, ORS two ninety-four point four seven one, prevents the government body of municipal operation to make a supplemental budget. For fiscal year, for which the regular budget has been prepared, if one or more of the following circumstances exist. A, an appearance or condition that is not ascertained in. Pairing the regional budget for a previous supplemental budget for the current year. For current budget period, and that requires a change in financial planning. B, impressing necessity that could not reasonably be foreseen with preparing a regional budget for a previous supplemental budget. Year or current budget period, and that requires prompt action. C, funds that are made available by any unit of federal, state, or local government, and the availability of which could not reasonably be perceived when preparing a regional budget or in previous supplemental budget. For the current year or current budget period. D, a request for services or facilities, the cost of which is to be supplied by a private individual corporation or company, or by another governmental unit. And the amount of which could not be accurately estimated in pairing the regional budget for a previous supplemental budget for the current year or current budget period. E, proceeds from the involuntary destruction, voluntary conversion. Or sale of property that seizes the immediate purchase, construction, or acquisition of different facilities or carry on government cooperation. F, ad war, ad luring property taxes that are received during fiscal year or budget period in amounts sufficiently greater. Than the amount estimated to be collected, such that the difference will significantly affect the level of government operations to be funded by taxes as divided in the original budget. For a previous supplemental budget for the current year or current budget period. G, a local option tax describing ORS two ninety-four point four seven six, that is certified for extension on the assessment and tax rule under ORS. One zero point zero six zero for the fiscal year or budget period, which the local option tax may be approved by voters. H, a reduction in available resources that requires a government body to reduce appropriations in the original budget for a previous supplemental budget. For the current year or current budget period. I, the original budget of the municipal corporation adopted in the ORS twenty-four point four five six. The nine estimated requirements, a debt service pursuant to ORS two ninety-four point four seven seven. Where the actual requirements are different from the estimated requirements included in the original budget or a previous supplemental budget. Whereas the attached supplemental budget number one for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, needs one or more of. Requirements ORS two ninety-four point four seven one. Now therefore the resolve that the city council, uh, Steve Ogrish hereby adopts a supplemental budget fiscal year. I go there. Be in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four. In the amount shown below for each fund. And we have resolved with the amount shown below as appropriations for fiscal year. In. July one, two thousand three. And for purposes shown are hereby appropriated for each fund. Yet further involved, representation, they'll be effective in giving it on passage. As that city council on. Eight, two thousand and three. And then the attachment shows the amount is the actual supplemental budget using the form provided by the state.
Okay, thank you, James. Is there any other motions to be made here?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the resolution eighteen twenty twenty-three after a second reading, I, I will.
I hear a second. Just made by councillor Tomlin, second by councillor, councillor Brewer. Any discussion? Alright, uh, Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Tomlin.
Aye.
Councillor Brewer.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
I abstain.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye. Councillor Yorkshire, do you want to abstain, or do you, do you want to vote?
I voted, I said aye.
Okay. Motion passes, um, James, can you read my title, please?
Yes. Resolution number eighteen dash two thousand twenty-three, a resolution adopting supplemental budget number one, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, in the appropriation.
Alright, moving on. Item sixteen, which is department staffer, board committee, commission reports, sixteen point one. Finance report. Colleen?
Um, so I think we're going to be fine if we, if, um. Up to cover, um, the financial part. All we have to mention, we can play now. That was the, uh. We can do about, on the C R T. Um, it's not in the budget line, you need to move it over to do as they asked.
Yeah. Any questions of Colleen on this budget? Or on the finance report? You think you'll have the November by, I guess there is a, a next meeting, but whenever, when do you anticipate November's?
Um, yeah, I can send that out if you guys just want it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Sixteen point two, Parks and Community Services Committee.
Um, so. We met on, uh, November thirteenth, um, old business we talked about was the contract update. The, uh, important part and what's, what's up with that. Um, data parking or dinner bank amphitheater. And the DLC grant of leads, um, new business was the. The power for the bus next to the park, the winterization of the park, the rotation, and the after Heidi, uh, letter. And the Saturday, December sixteen, Christmas.
Thank you, any questions of, sorry, Tomlin, no? Sixteen point three, Public Safety Committee, councillor Coker, are you still with us? Looked like it. Were you there, Jane?
I was. Okay, um, yeah, okay, uh, we discussed the hiring process for the police department. They're gonna take a couple members from that committee to be on the citizen, that starts, uh. Written test, I believe she said, I do. It's about the end of the year. I'm gonna do that. Why, since we discussed a lot of old business. Yeah, that, nothing works, Chad.
Yeah. Questions of James on that? Eight point four is Charter Review Subcommittee, councillor Kenyon?
Um, well, our committee is continuing to look at reviewing the charter. Although the last meeting in November, we canceled due to, um. Thanksgiving and some other people being out of town or something like that, so we haven't technically met again. But we will be here in a week or so.
Okay. Uh, sixteen point five is ODA, spoke a little bit about that, James, but anything more to add?
Yeah, just a lot of thanks to the folks on ODA. Helping plan and writing the ones pages for all the issues he wants to be, uh. I could do the, um. Of course, we do. Attention. Offers on our property.
Yeah. Sixteen point six is Admin Committee, councillor Kenyon?
That's one, I don't think we met.
I don't, this is next week.
Okay.
Yeah, cause of Thanksgiving.
Okay. And the library board.
That one, even though I generally do attend, I actually missed it on accident, but I did leave their minutes and, uh. That was the. Right, that, that was the meeting you have after the big. Um. Yeah, sorry, actually, thank you, yeah, so I believe it was a very successful event, I don't remember exactly, maybe you could quickly. Two thousand, two thousand dollars were raised for the library and that.
A lot of books.
That's awesome. They were making plans on, uh. How to use, utilize those funds and find, adding more books to the library. I don't remember a lot of other details, but. You'll be at the next weekend for that.
Alright, um, sixteen point eight is the WAC Funding Committee, I, I was not in attendance, James.
Uh, so, I, I was there, but since Sarah's there.
Yeah.
Um, I got your first question on a grant was put in, um, uh, Lake County, trying to law to support, uh, supplement solution was the lead. And it was, um, to order home authority for capacity to fund a staff person to staff that committee for the next, uh, seventeen months. And really just staffing makes it rare, uh, that's where, you know, there's a lot of money on the right channel, just, it's been hard to find, uh, the time to go after all of it. Um, and then the other piece of that app was for that, um, position also facilitate the, uh, meetings, asking everybody. Um, and then the other piece of that app was for that position also facilitate the, uh, meaning of asking readiness for. And write some capacity there, so application was really good, uh, with Lake County credit and great support. It's a great opportunity to get Lake County public help up to speed on the WAC, so it turned into a couple of tours of the WAC. And I really started off that whole, uh, opportunity of that building now, so that was mostly the focus, but I think. You know, so the call is out there for any public, um, that want to join that community, especially if they have time to write grants. Um, we could, we could use some help, because oftentimes there's multiple opportunities I'm having to see them.
Yeah, thank you. Sixteen point nine is. Mountain Bike Oregon twenty twenty three Financial Impact Report, James?
Yeah, some guys from Traveling County. Folks, it's kind of interesting to see what kind of money we can loan that brings in. On the residence or closer half million dollars in total. And it's not my organ, people also said it's their direct spending. They spend, which is almost seventy thousand dollars. Right, I thought that is. Everything they could have done locally, they did, so. We've about, in about events, well.
Yeah. All right, um, sixteen point one zero, Oak Ridge, Westport Chamber of Commerce, November newsletter.
Absolutely, the newsletter is come from the Chamber of Commerce, but that's our. On screen or promoting. You know, remind folks that eighty one can submit something for their. Newsletter or calendar. Have to provide them on several. It's a.
Okay. All right, next is item seventeen, other businesses, or any other business?
Just have one comment.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure the council's aware that Sacred Heart University District did finally close to most services, so that has. Very great impact to the ambulance service, um, and especially both Sacred Heart Hospital and McKenzie. Wall time, and when I say wall time, that means how long when you walk through the door with a gurney. Wall time is how long you sit on the wall of the patient, we've had multiple times where we're over an hour. Waiting in the hallway, um, last week I experienced where it were six of us, but waiting with a gurney. And that was before, um, university district had closed, so that not only fixed and affects ambulance, but obviously it affects. The place for people to go, um, and it affects the police department, because the police department takes a lot of their psychiatric patients to the university district, because that's where the behavioral health. Center is there, they are doing a hall in the E R there for, um, psych work kind of. Behavioral health hall, but it's really in the initial stages and they're still working on it, so there's gonna be a lot of changes there and. Um, I wish there was more we could do to say, please don't close that location, but it's already done.
Thank you.
So can I ask a quick question on that, is psych work, and I'm still remain open to your marriage?
And I think Scott would be the best person to clarify, but my understanding is they're still doing clinical stuff there, but not emergent psychiatric care. But there is also an urgent care in that, um, right across the street from the old Sacred Heart building as well.
Okay, um, moving on to public comment, and we'll start on the Zoom, is there any public comment on the Zoom platforms? Mister Barkley.
Yeah, my apologies, Mayor and Council, I had intended my comments to be a bit more fluid and thought I had it organized, but, uh. It didn't work out that way, so moving on, we'll we'll just call this transient lodging tax, not to be confused with terrorism lodging tax, part two. As I mentioned, the difference between motels and Airbnbs, VRBOs, so on and so forth, this is distinct as a McDonald's hamburger compared to primer and dinner. The difference, Oak Ridge motels are one hundred percent licensed, registered, zone commercial, giving them the luxury of much higher water rates. And were specifically built to be motel slash lodging facilities. Three of the four Oak Ridge motels have been operating on a daily basis, as such, for six decades and collecting taxes since their inception. Conversely, Airbnb's, VRBOs, et cetera, are primarily located in residential areas, were built for residential purposes. And repackaged to their current form, pay much lower residential water rates, and ninety six percent are unlicensed by the city. Though I don't know their registration status with the Oregon Secretary of State. The problem presented to council is lost revenue breaked as eighty five thousand dollars. And the presentation mentioned a significant increase in the number of Airbnb's, VRBOs in recent years. Applying the proposed six percent tax would require one point five million dollars of overnight rentals, excluding motels, because. Guess what, they're still paying the room tax, or collecting the room tax and forwarding it to the the state, same as they have always done. Applying the proposed six percent room tax will, I'm sorry, that would be repeat, does council accept a figure more? Than the total fire EMS budget or amount of property taxes paid last year is realistic revenue from gen generally seasonal short term rentals. It's a ridiculous number, during the past several years, the number of motels, lodges, et cetera, has actually decreased by two, and those that remain continue to collect and forward the room taxes. See, that's the reason that the problem is actually twofold, council has withheld basic functions of supervision and oversight for Airbnb's VRBOs, so on and so forth. And Airbnb's VRBOs have possibly withheld revenues from city coffers because they can. Please tell me that the solution is not to direct the C A to draft an ordinance that would essentially create the highest motel tax rate in Lane County of sixteen percent. Compared to. Incorporated city. Uh, taxes of eleven or eleven and a half percent. And that one of the five counselors directed directing exactly that. Has the courage to rescind the motion and direct the C A to draft a S T R specific ordinance. Because operating motel for seventeen of its sixty year history is far from what a rational person would deem short term. And in conclusion, I wanted to personally thank Rear Admiral Ketchum for acknowledging today as Pearl Harbor Day. And I would request that the room be muted so that we can have an actual moment of silence instead of a suggestion that. People do so on on their own time, and that's all I had, thank you.
Thanks, Mister Barkley, um, any other comments in the room?
I just have a, I need to go to forty four, I'm like, that's three, I can go. I just have a real quick question, I'm not sure the council or God missed hope. Now, when she was up there or present here today, I, on the on the time and place and the date. With December eighteenth number. That said, one A M, right, is it that eleven?
Yeah, it's one P M, yeah.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom platform for public comment? Anyone else in the room? All right, motion to adjourn?
I saw.
All right, motion, the meeting's adjourned at twenty oh three or eight oh three for civilians and.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yes.